Please turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions we may have. If anyone here present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign the sheet in the back of the room. If anyone wants to, an opportunity to speak tonight, you'll have time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement of other people's character. All right, it is, today is Wednesday, the eighth of October. The time is six o'clock, the time set for this public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Mr. Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, there's no changes to the agenda, so we'll just kick right in. We have, I'll open the public hearing on application two oh two five zero one four five six D S V and two oh two three zero one zero zero one M S P M N, the land group. And first, we'll ask Michaela to, our staff, to give us, go through the, what's on the record so far.
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I'm presenting project two zero two five zero one four five six V and two zero two three zero one zero zero one M S P M, an application by the land group for variance for the allowed height for field lighting, the size of a scoreboard, and fence height within a required setback. Also included is a modification to the master site plan that was approved in 2023 to allow for the build out of two soccer fields. The project location, which I'm sure you're familiar with, is the Expo Idaho site, specifically the parcel located at fifty six ten North Glenwood Street. It was previously the location of the racetrack, and you can see the parcel outlined here in red. The property is located within the rural urban transition district and is within Garden City's impact area. The variance application will encompass some other parcels on the Expo Idaho site for the height of the fencing within setbacks and the allowed height of lighting to allow for future expansion. However, the Boise Pro Soccer lease area is located within this parcel, and more specifically thirty or so acres at the southern portion of this parcel, and the modification will apply to just this parcel where the two fields will be located. The project proposal includes the build out of two soccer fields at Expo Idaho near the existing turf club. You can see the turf club here. The sports fields as a use were approved under the conditional use permit in 2023. The applicant is requesting a variance and master site plan modification to accomplish the build out of these fields. Due to the nature of the use, the proposal includes some field lighting, fencing, and a scoreboard that do not comply with Ada County code. The applicant is therefore requesting a variance to allow for field lighting, which you can see here on the left portion of this slide, to exceed height limitations that are set forth in Ada County's lighting code. This section of code requires lighting be limited to twenty five feet or the height of the structure and that the lighting meet a setback based on the height of the pole. The lighting required for the sports field use is taller than what is allowed under the code and is proposed at a hundred and twenty feet tall. The scoreboard is a unique sign type that does not readily fit into our sign code. It limits the signs, the scoreboard area to a maximum of a hundred square feet and thirty feet in height. The applicant is requesting that their scoreboard be fifty feet tall to allow for visibility for spectators and players and have a sign area closer to nine hundred square feet. This proposal is not out of proportion with what is currently present in the adjacent Hawks Memorial Stadium. So I'm showing you here the existing and permitted Hawks Memorial Stadium, what their scoreboard looks like. It was replaced in 2017, and it has approximately fifteen hundred square feet in sign area, so about five hundred square feet, six hundred square feet more. And it's approximately forty nine and nine inches tall, so about fifty feet, which is what's being proposed on this site. Additionally, this is the Hawks Memorial Stadium with similar field lighting, which was initially approved in nineteen eighty nine. It would have had to have a similar twenty five foot limitation. As you can see, these are quite a bit taller than that, showing the bleachers here that are at least twenty five feet tall. In the review process, staff also found that the proposed fencing on the site is eight feet tall, which is matching existing fencing on the Expo Idaho seat Expo Idaho site. It exceeds the six foot tall allowance within the required setbacks. The fencing is required to be this height for safety purposes, and it's also included in the variance application. So as I'm sure you're familiar, there are three findings required to grant a variance. The first is that it doesn't grant a right or special privilege not otherwise allowed in the base district. The applicant is requesting relief from standards that aren't set by the rural urban transition district. Therefore, they're not requesting this right or special privilege. Second finding is that the variance needs to relieve an undue hardship due to unique characteristics on the site. This situation is unique in that the use, sports fields, was approved by this body in 2023 under the previous approval. The location of the sports fields was set under that approval, and to utilize them, the lighting, scoreboard, and fencing needs to be included in the application. Given that this use was previously approved in this layout on the site, the variance is required to relieve that undue hardship of that previously approved use and layout. The third finding is that the variance is not detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. The application was transmitted to relevant agencies and no comments were received indicating that it would be detrimental. The fencing and lighting are primarily for safety purposes, and they will require a building permit. The applicant is also requesting a modification to their approved master site plan that includes the build out of the soccer fields and associated facilities. The improvements include twenty eight modular structures located within modified shipping containers that will house restrooms, concessions, and locker rooms. As covered in the variance application, the proposal includes an expansion of existing fencing on the site around the perimeter of the fields, lighting for the fields and in the parking area, as well as the scoreboard. There's also additional bleachers proposed for seating, goalposts, netting, and a flagpole. The proposed construction complies with Ada County code except for the stated variance request. Staff reviewed the lighting package for the off-field lighting, and the applicant is aware that that lighting will need to comply with Ada County code. A condition of approval has been added to that effect. The application was transmitted to relevant agencies and no objections were received. The building official indicated building permits will be required, noting specifically it will be required for the scoreboard, and the applicant is currently working on that application. No public comments were received on this application. Staff finds that it complies with Ada County code and recommends approval to the board. I'll add my presentation to the record as an exhibit, and I stand for any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Michaela. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, I would have a question. You did get the lighting from the Hawks Stadium, and you indicated that it's above the twenty five feet. Do you know about approximately how high those lights are?
Mr. Chairman, I did dig through the applications that we had, and it seemed like that specific height was not included in their building permit or zoning certificate or their conditional use permit. So it appears that it was permitted as accessory to the field.
Okay, okay, any other, any questions? All right, well, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Just to review, so the lighting and the fencing that they're proposing is basically the same as the Hawks Stadium?
Yeah, Commissioner Daly, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, as Bob, Bob Chatter here? Shatter? Schaefer?
Schaefer.
Schaefer, okay.
Bob Schaefer.
Okay, Bob.
Yeah.
Welcome to our meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Appreciate it. We're happy to be here with you guys tonight. Bob Schaefer with the land group out in Eagle. Business address is four six two East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho. I am one of the project landscape architects working with the development team on AC Boise. Happy to be here and walk you guys through what we're proposing as far as variance requests and the master site plan changes. Along with me tonight, we do have representatives from the ownership group, the architects, Oakland Construction, and Jeff Wardle from Clark Wardle is with us as well. So I think we have a good team here to answer any questions you guys might have about what we're proposing tonight. Michaela, thanks for your presentation. Again, as she mentioned, we're here to discuss the master site plan modifications and variance for allowed field, field lighting height, scoreboard size and height, and then fencing around the perimeter of our site. Here is the approved master site plan that Michaela referenced in her presentation that you all approved in 2023. As part of our application, we had to provide an update modification to this site plan, which we show generally on the next slide here. As Michaela mentioned, this first phase or AC Boise includes a synthetic turf performance field there adjacent to the existing grandstands and the turf club. And then Phase One B, if you will, is a natural grass practice field to the south. So that's at the bottom of your screen there. Both fields are proposed to be lighted. The performance pitch, our lighting plan for that performance field, has four pole lights, which Michaela showed in her presentation. Those are approximately a hundred and twenty feet in height. They are all located with on the corners of the pitch, so the northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest corners of the pitch. We are also mounting a little bit of lighting in the roof of the grandstand itself. The poles themselves are proposed at that height so that we are able to appropriately light the field for television broadcasts and obviously for performance itself in the evenings. The practice pitch to the south, we're still working through lighting design on that field. As it stands today, we're looking at a six pole arrangement around that practice pitch with pole heights more in the range of around sixty five feet in height, so quite a bit smaller. The practice pitch to the south is not a performance pitch, a performance field. So the intention is that any television broadcasts or anything of that nature would occur at the performance field to the north. The modification of the site plan really, I think, is a refinement of that approved master site plan from 2023. We had some moderate shifts in field locations from that approved master site plan. And then, as Michaela mentioned in her presentation, just a refinement of bleacher locations, concession stands, you know, amenities around the field itself. So some moderate adjustments, if you will, to the master site plan itself. This slide I threw in just for a little bit of fun. I think as you guys all know that we are under construction currently. So this photo was taken of the, of the field last week just to give you an idea of the, the boundary of the performance field and where it's going to lie in relation to the grandstand and the turf club. Okay, this exhibit here is the actual, one of our lighting exhibits from the photometric plan for the field itself. You'll see poles are located, as I mentioned, on the corners of the pitch, and the red lines are indicating essentially the lighting path, if you will, onto the pitch itself. Then on the left of the, of your screen there, you'll see the scoreboard is highlighted with a red bar. So that is the scoreboard we're proposing, very similar in size to the scoreboard at the Hawks Stadium. So the, the bottom, to the bottom of the scoreboard is twenty eight feet in height. Top of the scoreboard is fifty three feet in height, I believe. The design of that scoreboard is such that there's a bleacher in front of the scoreboard. It's that gray box that you can see there to the right. That is the fan wall, so a standing bleacher on the south end of the field. So the scoreboard is designed to stand behind that score, that bleacher. It is a two-sided scoreboard as well, so it's located and oriented so that we can project scores onto the performance pitch side of the scoreboard as well as the practice pitch to the south, should we have an event on the south side of the field that needs a scoreboard. Again, the pole height here that we're proposing is about a hundred and twenty feet per pole. For reference, the grandstand is approximately seventy feet in height. So we have a bit of a delta there with the existing grandstand. But again, we've got quite a bit of height already existing, you know, on the grounds. And again, the height of those poles is predicated by needing to light the field to performance standards and again, for television broadcast needs. Okay, Michaela showed you this exhibit in her presentation as well, again, just an elevation of the poles themselves. They are LED fixtures using the latest technology available to us, and they are shielded so that light wash is minimized to the maximum extent possible. Bit of a rough elevation of our scoreboard. Again, just to get you a sense of scale, again, we're about twenty three feet, twenty eight feet to the bottom of the scoreboard to the ground plane, and then about fifty three feet in height total. Very similar to the scoreboard at Hawks Stadium. And again, we do have a bleacher in front of the grandstand or in front of the scoreboard itself. So it's meant to stand behind that, that bleacher. Few exhibits here, again, from our photometric plan for the performance field. You see the grandstand in the background. Gives you a sense of scale for the pole heights relative to the grandstand. And then again, how we are minimizing the wash away from the field with the latest technology using LEDs and shielding on those lights. Again, just a few more of these, a few more exhibits, again, indicating how we've, we've done our absolute best to keep the light wash beyond the field to a minimum. This exhibit's been around for a number of, for a bit now, so you may have seen it. It's kind of where we're headed, right? When we get the grandstand painted, the field completed, and the lights in place. So that's, that's the vision, if you will. The light locations have shifted a little bit from this exhibit, but generally, this is the intent of the use for a night game. In relation to surrounding residences, the red lines there that you're seeing indicate measurements to the nearest residential properties at Expo Idaho. We're well over a thousand feet away from the nearest residences. Keep in mind, too, that the field itself is actually to the left of the pond in this exhibit. So again, we're well, we're well over a thousand feet away from the nearest residences. So we feel like we've, we're going to minimize that impact to the surrounding area and neighborhood as much as we possibly can with this design. For reference, this, of course, is a shot of Bronco Stadium at BSU. We are using almost the exact same technology with this lighting plan as is shown here at Boise State. So that gives you, I think, a pretty clear expectation for what the light wash will look like. And you'll notice that the field itself, the grandstands, is very well lit, but the surrounding area outside of the stadium is dark. And that is the intent here as well with this design for AC Boise. So that is the, the sort of the gist of my, my presentation. I want to thank Michaela and Ada County staff for all their help to date. We are in agreement with the staff report, so we have no issues there whatsoever. And we would ask for your approval here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Just while I think you explained it well, but just to reiterate and make sure.
Yeah.
The, the experience base in terms of this kind of lighting, do you have experience base from other places other than Boise State, which is actually a very good example? But anything else that you have an experience base in? Because technology's improved, like for the Hawks Stadium from when the Hawks Stadium was theirs.
Yeah.
So this is an improved both focus as well as distribution of light, et cetera?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Daly. You know, I have to be honest, I don't know the age of the lights at Hawks Stadium. You know, the original, like Michaela mentioned, the original lights go back to, you know, the late eighties. Technology's come a long way since then. Our team has extensive knowledge, you know, doing these sorts of fields. In fact, we have Kyle from the lighting team here, if you would like some more specific examples of other, other projects that he's worked on. But we're confident that we, again, are using the latest technology to minimize the impact of these lights.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
So basically, the picture you had of Hawks State, or of Bronco Stadium would basically be the impact, neighborhood impact?
Yeah, that's our expectation, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand you had a neighborhood meeting on, on this issue?
We did, we did, Commissioner Davidson, indeed.
Did you present to the neighborhood?
We did, I did. I was there, yes.
How, how did that go? What was the discussion like?
You know, it was a, it was a very positive discussion. In fact, we spent the majority of the time asking questions about the team itself rather than what's being proposed here tonight. So there's quite a bit of excitement, I think, in the neighborhood and the surrounding community and the Treasure Valley at large for this project. It was, it was one of my more positive neighborhood meetings, if you will, right? I've been at this for, for, you know, a number of years now, twelve, fifteen years. And in fact, I told the crowd on that evening that this was, that was a great meeting. So we did hear, you know, we did work through, you know, some of these similar exhibits and explain to everyone there that, you know, we're trying to light these fields, and that was the plan. And took comments, and again, it was a very positive conversation. We probably had around two dozen books there.
Okay, good, Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead.
And I'm assuming that the lights will only be used when the field's in play and be turned off after?
Correct, correct. That's, that's correct, yeah. The season, you know, we obviously, AC Boise will have a men's and a women's team. The men's team generally plays from March through October every year. Saturday evening games are sort of the norm. Obviously, you know, and we're in spring and fall games, the lights will be used a bit more often. But that's generally the schedule and the plan.
But not going to be left on overnight?
Correct, that's.
Now, when they are on, do you feel that they will impact the closest neighbors? Or do you feel that it, it'll be minimal?
In my, in my opinion, I think it'll be minimal. Yeah, you know, I think it'd be minimal.
Okay, could, could we go back to the drawing you had of the aerial view of the, the field?
Sure.
Pitch?
Yeah.
Right there, yeah. So I just, I had a question about the placement of the scoreboard.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, I mean, looking where you've got it situated, are people in the grandstands going to be able to see it? And then obviously, the people sitting underneath it don't seem like they'd be able to see it. So is that, I mean, what's, what's, how's that going to work?
Yeah, yeah, fair question. We went through several iterations on locations for the scoreboard. The north, to the right of your page, there's two gray bars on that, on that right side of the page. Those are the VIP boxes for attendance. And then, of course, we have the grandstand itself, bleachers, new bleachers in front of the grandstands as well. So the majority of people at the game will be on that north and northwest side of the field. So the south side of the pitch made the most sense for the scoreboard. And then, as we worked through the programming of the site with the second field, it became, there was some, some benefit, right? Putting that scoreboard on the south side so we could also use it on that practice pitch to the south as well. Because again, that scoreboard's double-sided, so it serves multiple purposes. The bleacher below the grandstand is the fan wall. So we, and our expectation is those are sort of the more regular fans, more excited fans. So we feel like they're going to be paying attention to the game, and they'll know the score anyhow.
And you didn't consider putting more than one on different sides?
No, at this time, we felt one was adequate. You know, there, the lease area for AC Boise is thirty acres. There's going to be additional improvements coming down the pike here in the next few years. And we're still working through the programming for all of that. So, you know, we may circle back to that topic, you know. In, in the long-term plan here is that, you know, this is phase one, and hopefully, the team grows and we're able to expand these facilities in the future, and we'll be back in front of you gentlemen again.
And you feel that the scoreboard is going to be large enough? Because even the Hawks board, you know, it's not the easiest to read the balls and strikes in the innings there. But do you, do you feel you've got enough size on this that it will be visible?
Yeah, we think so. We think so. We've studied that in, in pretty good detail. You know, the other piece to that is that there's, you know, there's some complexities to constructing, you know, these sorts of amenities too. So, you know, given structural requirements, that sort of thing, too, that we felt like this is the, about the right size for the scoreboard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, this is not really part of your presentation tonight, but I'm just curious about amplified sound, you know, for announcers calling the game. Where do you guys add on, you know, right level of amplified sound and speaker placement and making sure that doesn't affect the neighbors?
Yeah, we do have some amplified sound. You know, the full audio visual for the complex, and there are a handful of cameras as well for television broadcasts. I think with the amplified sound, it's pretty minimal. You know, it's not as if we're in like a, you know, soccer's a little different than like football where you have a little more regular announcement, right, of plays and that sort of thing. I think with crowd noise as well, there's going to be very little impact from the amplified sound when you consider we have a crowd there as well during games.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you a lot. I had some of the same questions Commissioner Davidson had, and that was on the placement of your, of your scoreboard.
Okay.
I'm wondering, is there any, is there any, because, because it looked to me like you have the grandstands there, and the scoreboard's going to be up above them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're, you're suggesting that they're more, they're fans that are, that are more into the game, and they'll know what the score is anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
And soccer is not something, you're not going to have a 45 to 50 score.
Most of the times, correct.
And, and, and the soccer, anyway.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if, where are the, because, because I know you have, you have arrangements or the, the group has arrangements with, for TV broadcasting.
Yeah.
Would that have any, anything to do with the placement of the scoreboard so that it would be visible to the, for the cameras?
Yeah, yeah. It, it would. That's a great question, Commissioner Beck. The primary camera will be located at the press box. That's the little rectangle on the, the very center bottom of your page, the gray box there. That's the press box. So one of the primary cameras will be located there. So it'll have a good view of the field, you know, both north to south. There are also cameras located across the field. And then I, if my memory serves, it's generally at every corner of the pitch as well. So USL, the league that AC Boise is joining, has requirements for camera locations. And so we're following those specifications. But again, there are, you know, six to eight cameras located around the pitch for broadcast.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure if the, if your fans will tell you, if they didn't like the placement of your scoreboard, you'll, you'll hear from them.
We'll hear about it. Yep.
You'll hear about it for sure. But I'm certainly not in a position to, to pass judgment on whether that's a good place for it. That's, you know, you guys are professionals. You know what you're doing. No, I don't have any more questions. Do you, anybody else have any questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. And you'll be available at, depending on our testimony, if you, if you want to do any rebuttal, you'll be available for that.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
Okay. Well, start out, I have five people signed up. One, Shane Jimenez.
Good evening, Shane. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to stand up and just ask a few questions. My name is Shane Jimenez. I live at 5460 Road, North Bogus Basin Road in Ada County.
Okay.
I, we own a property that's adjacent to Remington Street, and it will be eventually a residential property. And so we just had some questions about the sign. First of all, we support the project. I think it's a wonderful addition to the entire Treasure Valley. But I would like to just ask some questions about screening. I think a lot of the questions that I had were already answered in the, in the previous testimony. So, so that was great. But screening, scoreboard location, you know, kind of light noise. And I think you brought up a good point about just regular, you know, noise. So the question that I have is, as the neighbors, and if we could go back to the slide that shows the distance between the neighbors, that would be, that'd be great. So, so our property is actually a vacant piece of land that sits where you see 1094, the 1,094 feet there. We, we sit right at the corner of that. So there would be residences actually probably closer to 600 feet from where that's shown. And you can see to the south property, it's under construction now. There's residential buildings and structures there as well. We'd just like to understand, you know, is there a way to do some, some screening for light and noise along that buffer between residential and, you know, a special purpose facility? That's, those are our questions, I guess. So, and then I guess the next thing would be just the location, the scoreboard. So the scoreboard, you know, obviously if it was oriented towards the, the canopy, that would, and it was not two-sided, it would put light towards the fan base and not towards the neighbors to the, you know, east side of Remington Street. So those, those were our questions, really.
All right. Well, we're not, we're not here to answer your questions, but the, the applicant can answer your questions.
That'd be great.
When they come up with that for rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question before you sit down, sir?
Oh.
No, before you sit down.
Jane, he has a question.
We've got to interrogate you before you sit down.
Right ahead.
Have, have you lived in Ada County for a while?
I've lived in Ada County since 1977.
Okay. So you know, I mean, you're, you're building where we have the concerts for the Western Idaho Fair. And we, sometimes those are louder than we want them to be. You know, it's hard to get the promoters to turn them down sometimes. But you realize there's going to be a lot of noise, not just from the fair, but from the Western Idaho, or not just from the concerts of the fair, but the fair in general.
Sure.
And then we've got the park coming. And so you, you're kind of building in a noisy zone. You just, I'm sure you understand.
Yeah, we, we fully understand that. And, you know, as a kid growing up, I went to the horse track with my family every Wednesday and Sunday. So yeah, I'm well aware of, of what's gone on over there.
Okay.
And again, I, we support the idea and the concept and, and we're happy to have it, really. I think it's just a great addition. And so we just have, again, some general questions and would like to be able to communicate that as we move forward in our project to potential buyers and, and residents that'll live there.
Well, we want to do what we can to minimize, you know, noise and impact on residential properties from the fair. But obviously, when you, when you develop the property, whoever you rent to, I hope they're, you know, they, they know they're, what they're moving next to. Because, I mean, we get noise complaints sometimes from the fair, from the concerts at the Hawks Stadium that are farther away than I'm comfortable people hearing it. But that's just kind of the fact of life down there.
Yeah, I guess the good news is they'll be built first and then those folks moving in will, they'll know what they're, they're getting into. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would have one, one question. Did you attend the neighborhood meeting?
I did not. I'm not certain that we were notified.
Oh, okay.
At the neighborhood meeting. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison.
Clark.
Hello, Allison.
Hello. My name's Allison Clark. I live at 6268 West State Street. And I don't really have any comments or testimony at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to state if you're supportive or not supportive, or?
I am a little bit biased. I do work at Cushing Terrell, so I am in support of it. My first variance meeting, so it's just.
All right. Well, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Welcome, Brad.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Daley, Commissioner Davidson, I'm Brad Stith. Live at 2795 North El Rancho Place, Boise, Idaho, Ada County. Just wanted to express my thanks for Ada County and their partnership on this project. As Bob indicated in his presentation and for what Michaela and her staff has done and what they've indicated, we've really spared no expense when it came to getting the best technology from a lighting standpoint and a sound standpoint into a world-class stadium that we're building for the citizens of Ada County. And, you know, I'm happy to, coupled with Bob, I'm happy to answer any questions on, on what we're doing. To answer the scoreboard question, to give more clarity on that, from a broadcast perspective, when, you know, we're going to film towards the west. And so from a broadcast perspective, when they aren't on the soccer players, anytime there's a break, so there's a throw-in, there's a corner kick, the customary broadcast breakoff is towards the supporter section, which has the scoreboard right above it. So from, from consulting with both ESPN and CBS, and as all of you know, all of these games are nationally broadcast on those two family of networks, they wanted to ensure that our scoreboard was going to be where their breakoff was, and at the same time, where it's visible to more than 90% of our season ticket holders and fans that are going to be attending games. So if there's any questions, happy to come back up or answer now. But greatly appreciate the partnership and thank you.
Well, thank you. Hold on a minute. Is there any, any questions from the commission? All right. No, thank you, Brad. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have Cody Sharp.
Cody Sharp, I'm with Oakland Construction, the general contractor for this project, and just wanted to express my vote in favor for this project. It's a wonderful ownership that we've had the opportunity to work with on this project to, just as Brad was saying, they've, they've spared no expense and really taken into account the, the citizens of Ada County and the, the entertainment that they can provide. And, and really looked into the, the sound and the light distribution and, and made sure that it's done in a way that will provide minimal impact to, to the surrounding neighborhoods as well. So that's it.
Any questions for Cody? Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Leading commissioners, my name's Lauren Novak, 3531 West Hillcrest Drive in Boise. I'm the construction manager representing Gardner Group on this. So my job is to make sure that Oakland builds this correctly and to specs. I am in favor of this project and thank you again for allowing us to make a presentation tonight.
Sure. Any questions from the commission? All right. Thank you, Lauren. Okay, that's all I have for the sign up. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't get a chance to speak? Go ahead. Come on up and state your name and address.
Sorry, I got here a little late to sign up. Marty Peroni, 5801 Plantation Lane. I am next door to Shane. I'm the developer right there building 23 townhomes right next to it. First off, we're stoked about the project. I've, I will be down getting my season tickets. So we're, we're all about it. But, you know, we've got some concerns. We don't want to melt the siding off the house with lights, you know, that kind of stuff. So if we can, and from the placement, it looks like it works quite well. I just thought I'd throw out some ideas. Lights stay on probably longer than they maybe need to. Maybe they can cut some of the ones that direct toward the residences off sooner than the other ones that face the other way to help minimize some of the lighting that happens that just kind of goes on for a while as everybody clears the field, stuff like that. Speakers, kind of going back toward the stadium more than straight out. It's probably real easy to put them right there to go straight out. But it would be nice if they went the other way to some extent. I've got one unit sold and I told them, I said, you know, the, this place comes with concert tickets. And they're excited about that. And so, you know, we have no complaints on it. Just some of the, you know, mechanics of it would be really nice to think through to make it a little bit easier for everybody on, on that level. So that's my comments.
You're probably excited about the park that's going in there too.
Very.
That's, that's, that's a positive, I would guess.
Oh, it's highly positive. The whole thing is positive. Seriously, it really is.
Well, thank you.
So, no, we're stoked and we hope you guys are all about it too. Obviously you are. I've been to every meeting, by the way, and I've seen you guys up there shoveling and everything. I'm, I'm, you know, we're all about it.
Well, good. Well, good.
But I just wanted to bring those couple thoughts up. Maybe they could think through some logistics of that.
Sure. Is there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I would hope you guys could exchange contact information with, with stadium people and stay in touch because some, some of these little adjustments could be made without involving the board. You know, you guys just collaborating together. And I think, I'm sure they're more than willing to, to hear suggestions. And, you know, some, some issues may not pop up until a year down the line when, when you see how everything works. So I'm sure they're, they're more than willing to be accommodating to, to the neighbors.
Kind of like Topgolf when it happened. You know, they, they, hold it. We got to figure out a way to, you know, not blind everybody that drove by. And they just had to make some adjustments to make it work. Probably the same thing.
Yeah.
Type of deal. So, yeah.
I, I will reiterate, I, it does make me a little nervous when I'm hearing about, you know, dense residential there because I'm just anticipating, oh, are we going to hear endless noise complaints and, you know, issues with, you know, horse smells and cow smells? Because it's a lot of agriculture down there during fair time. So, I mean, it's, you, you're the property owner. You guys are the developer. I mean, it's, I guess it's on you to make sure that the people you move in there are fully informed of what they're moving next to.
Well, they'll be buying at the time that it's already implemented. So it's, you know, it's buyer beware. You know, I mean, it's common sense, quite frankly. So, anyway, who knows? I can't, you know, just like you, you can't run that whole gamut. It's, we'll see how that goes.
I think for the right, right buyers, it's an incredibly desirable location.
Oh, yeah. So, it is. Thank you, though. Full support.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Okay. I see a lawyer coming.
Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, Jeff Wardle. My address is 251 East Front here in Boise Suite 310. And as the lawyer who was responsible for addressing the Topgolf lighting, the thing that I love about modern lighting is that by using LEDs, we have much greater control over them. The manufacturers that provide this type of lighting understand, you know, the need to shield, the need to do it. And I have yet to encounter a project with LEDs that we haven't been able to get dialed in just correctly and address those issues. So thank you.
Wait, is there any questions? Yeah, you got a question here. Go ahead.
Not a question, just a comment. That was the purpose of my question on the lighting. What we've, what we have in today's world can be done exactly what you just said. And that was the reason for my question.
Yes. And, and again, lawyers shouldn't have to be electrical consultants, but sometimes we are. And that's the beauty of LEDs is that you have much greater control over them than we have over the old sodium halide lights that sat up at the top of the pole and buzzed. So.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else before we, all right, go, go ahead. Bob, go ahead. And you can fill in the blanks if you'd like to, or?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Michaela?
I didn't, I didn't hear any massive opposition.
I made, I made a couple of notes. We'll clarify a few things.
Okay, sure.
Absolutely. Michaela, if you don't mind, maybe kicking back to, I think it's maybe the first or second slide in my presentation. Yeah, let's, let's start there. Let's start with the, the approved master site plan for 2023. So appreciate the comments related to the adjacent properties. Again, of course, this is the approved master site plan that our friends over at Port completed with the park design back in 2023. You'll see that, you know, so generally the park is in the green and then generally the lease area for pro soccer is in the blue. There's a little bit of, you know, transition in there as well. So, you know, we're working closely right now with Josh Brown in, at the county and with the, the general, the team at Port and CM Company on the, with, on the park design and the adjacencies to pro soccer. So all that to be said that, you know, we're, we're still working through some of the edges, right, and the edge conditions between the two projects. The east edge, in fact, of our, of our site, Josh and team are working through some park improvements over there right now. So there will be amenities, there will be things, if you will, between the field and the adjacent properties to the east. Michaela, if you could kick to the next slide, please. So the, you'll see, we've got a couple, three other fields here, sort of superimposed over the existing ground. That's, you know, kind of our first, this is an exhibit from a number of months ago. As we, as our team is starting to work through what we see as, you know, future phases of pro soccer's development, right? So again, we're going to have additional facilities between the, the pitch and the adjacent neighbors. We just don't know what those exactly are at this time, right? So we're still working through the programming for the rest of the pro soccer complex. Having said that, you know, we do again, still have street frontage and then a little bit of park space on the east boundary to pro soccer and the residences. So, so there's more to come. I'm just not at liberty at this time to really show you what all of that will be in the future. But we are mindful that we do have residences to the east. There are people to the east. And as we continue to develop the master, the, the second master site plan for pro soccer, we'll keep that in mind, right? That we need to make sure that we're buffering adjacent uses and being thoughtful about our neighbors. That's definitely part of our intent as we continue to develop this site. Again, we expect to be back before you gentlemen again sometime, you know, in the next few years as that further develops. Just to clarify too, you know, timing, typical seasons for USL, there are typically about 20 home games. Again, usually played on Saturdays. Typically, they're done by about nine or 9:30 in the evening. So they're not a late night event or a late night affair. Again, we anticipate with our sound amplification, it's pretty minimal and that, you know, the crowd noise will probably be just as equal to any sort of sound amplification that we have, you know, for our games. So again, just to clarify a few points, right? Not, not many nights of, of lights every year. And again, you're done usually by nine or 9:30 in the evening.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's what I was waiting for as well because you hadn't, you hadn't amplified that there is going to be something on the east side. And that would then, as you do that, back to what we've already talked about, you'd do that in light of what the concerns are, the potential fencing, lighting, all of those things can be, potentially be addressed as you move through the process, correct?
Of course, of course. Absolutely. Yeah.
For the neighbors.
Yeah. And of course, you know, we're working closely with, with county staff, you know, both in planning and in operations, you know, on all aspects of this. There's a lot of adjacencies with the park, right? So we're So we're really working through some nuance right now, you know, about access into pro soccer from the park, that sort of thing. So there's much more to come as we continue to develop the site.
Because back back the comparison you made with Bronco Stadium, or the, where they, because they're completely surrounded and.
Yeah.
Focused.
Yeah.
That's what this will ultimately be as well as more, more than just an open area, correct?
Correct, yeah. I think the the conditions we have on the ground today are the most open it will be, right? You know, and as we, we'll just keep layering in more and more, you know, more and more complexity, more and more facilities, and the plan, you know, is to grow the team and to grow the facility, right? I'm not sure if Bronco Stadium will ever get to that level, but, you know, definitely we'd like to see, you know, additional bleachers and, you know, more seating as the team becomes more popular.
Well, and based on the ticket sales current.
Yeah.
That's clearly going to be the case, or at least the community is excited about it, clearly based on the crowd here tonight, as well as expressions we've heard and that you're hearing based on tickets, so.
Absolutely.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you for your assistance, too.
All right. Any other questions?
So just to, just to, you know, make sure we're on the record, it sounds like your your clients are willing to, you know, deal with any issues with the neighbors, you know, any reasonable requests, because they didn't make any specific requests. It's kind of like, let's build it and see if any additional screening is needed, but it sounds like they're amenable to to working that out if reasonable.
Yes, I think that's accurate.
Because it'd be great for for these issues to be resolved between the team and the neighbors without coming to the board, so it sounds like that's that's the intent here.
Yeah, that would be our goal as well. You know, we want to be good neighbors, you know? We we feel the excitement from the community for this facility, and we want to be good neighbors and good stewards of the of the ground.
All right. Well, I just have one one question, really, it's not related to the to the application, but LED lights don't use anywhere near as much energy, do they, as the old-style lights?
Yeah, I think that's true. I'm not a lighting expert, per se, but yeah, they definitely are much more efficient. Yeah.
That's right. I thought that, and then with the technology, you can control them better and so forth. I think that's all good. Any other questions, more? All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, we don't, we don't have any more testimony, and I'll ask Michaela, is there, are there any documents need to be added to the file?
Mr. Chair, I will be adding the applicant's presentation to the file as well.
Okay, and no other documents in?
Nope.
Okay. I will close the public hearing on application 2025-01456-V and 2023-01001-MSP-M, the land group. The application being closed, it's ready for us. Need discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Question for staff. So if we grant this, does the board still maintain the ability to make, you know, minor adjustments in the future if, say, there was an issue between neighbors and the team that they couldn't resolve on their own?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, at this point, you would be entitled, entitling this project to move forward as proposed, but if they did come back in the in the future with some kind of additional modification or in the next phase, you potentially would have that opportunity to apply additional conditions at that point.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just as a clarification, because they are, based on their game plan, as they've described it, no plan intended on the game, but their plan for the future, they are going to be coming back to you administratively or us for approval as they move through a process that they anticipate. So we will have the opportunity to, in answer to Commissioner Davidson's question, we will be, it will be a dynamic process as we move through here, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, they would be coming back, whether it's to staff or to you, for for an approval, so there would be that additional.
A variety of different approvals. So we we will be, we will be deeply engaged as they move through a process.
Well, we should make note that the other pitches that they talk about, that that's part of their lease agreement, that they will build more pitches over the over the succeeding years. So, yeah, they'll be back. All right. Any other questions or discussion? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application 20501456-V and 2023-01001-MSP-M to the land group for the variances they've approved, or they've requested. Based on the conditions, health and safety, special right of privilege and hardship as described by the staff have been met, based on the discussions we've had tonight and the staff report and the dialogue we've had tonight. So I move that we approve those applications.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the the motion. Is that a sufficient motion?
Yes.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any other discussion?
Chair?
Yes.